We'll call the meeting to order. And we have everybody here, including our student members. So we need approval of the agenda. Everybody got the agenda?
Mm-hmm.
We'll approve the agenda.
Second.
A motion from Cheryl, second from Jacob. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post say no, carry. Okay, then we have public comment. Anybody here for public comment? Okay. We have the consent agenda for everybody to see. We have a series of minutes there. I assume everybody read those. Cheryl, could you maybe mention your treasurer's reports?
Yes, I did get in to see the bills today and, or yesterday. And everything seems to be just normal transactions. It was interesting to find out that, through reviewing the bills, that our Innovation Center is now doing the shirts for our custodians and food service and our aprons. So I thought that was really cool, just to note that they were, they were getting that done for us.
Yeah, they've got a whole host of projects like that.
Yes.
They have a couple more that are in the works.
There was quite a list of things that they had done. Exciting.
Good. Personnel items. Matt, do you have anything to add, anywhere in there?
Just a couple leave of absences that I would recommend approving. Sheila Cash is resigning her pause position. She will remain on staff as a pair professional. Stephanie Good would be a new pair professional that is coming on due to needs and increase in enrollment. And then we have to make some changes to the musical contracts due to Ms. Bungam being held out leave. There's a, that's what those, those two changes are for that. And then Jenica Schultz is going to sign back on for Winter Camp advisor. Be my, my recommendation to approve all the personnel items.
Okay, so we have the consent agenda. Do we have a motion to approve?
I make the motion.
I have a motion from Rick.
A second.
A second from Thomas. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post say no, carry. Do you go to communication items? So Matt, we're back with you.
I have two items to, just to fill the board in or give the board a heads up on. I did email MSBA as far as the school board self-evaluation. They did give me some information back. Looks like it is, the cost is about $975 if it's something the board's interested in. That would require us to schedule a special meeting that would be about a two to three hour in-service. So my understanding, the way I understand the process is all board members would do a survey. They compute all the survey data, put it into a report, and then they get the board together in like a work session and go over the report and do some professional development for school board is, is what they do. And that's what that two to three hour work session would be to, to go through that. As I said, the cost is $975. And of course, MSBA is more than willing to, to get us on the calendar and come out and work with us. They would actually really enjoy that. So think about that. That will be a decision that I'd like the board to make at the December business meeting. You guys can give me your direction on that one. Okay? And second item that I just want to fill the board in, Mr. Orline and I met with Cold Spring. And I'm gonna say Cold Spring Granite. Their name now is Cold Spring, but every time I say Cold Spring, they think I'm meeting with the city. And I'm talking about Cold Spring Granite. So we met with Cold Spring Granite last week on the 22nd. It was Painesville, Recoree, Eden Valley, Watkins, and Kimball were the four school districts. Cold Spring representatives were there, and then we also had a representative from St. Cloud Technical and Community College. The meeting was really talking about how could we potentially start a cohort of manufacturing and engineering, like an introduction to manufacturing and engineering? That would actually be onsite at a business partner. And obviously Cold Spring is, is very interested in being that business partner. Meeting was excellent. Mr. Orline and the principals from those three other districts are gonna be working out some details. But it looks very, it looks like there's a very real possibility for next year we would be able to start what I would call an introduction to manufacturing and engineering with Cold Spring. And it would be a series of four courses that would be taught by St. Cloud Tech and Community College instructors. Total of eight college credits, and all of the coursework would be onsite at Cold Spring's campus. They have some employees that would probably add to the course and do some kinda like adjunct teaching and stuff like that as well. But they would bring experts in from their facility as well. So there'll be more information coming. Look for that as, as the principals kinda work through the, the details on it. But I think that that concept is very intriguing to me. To me, this is kind of like a first run at it. And the real question is then how do we develop those business partners in other industry sectors to be able to give students more opportunities to expand their learning beyond the four walls here and get them out into an industry setting? So look for more of that, but I think it's a, it's a very real possibility that this could be something we could offer next school year.
Excellent.
Those are the two items I have. Any questions for me?
Then we're on committee reports, and I believe we have a couple. Maggie, did you have a committee reports?
Sure. The West Central District, we met on the 11th. And mostly we spent our time reviewing the auto report. Everything came back with overall positive results. And then also, we talked more about just how funding happens within that district. Just have a better understanding of where the funding comes from, from the four districts that are part of that co-op. And then, should I go into the design?
Look, we're gonna take that as an agenda item.
Oh yeah, that's a different one, sorry.
Come back to that.
Okay.
Okay.
Facilities. Facilities, we met last week Monday. Had a lot of great discussions. UNESCO was there, provided us more information detailed out on specifically the units, kinda the day quoting, and then more breakdown on some of the pricing stuff. We kinda adjourned from that meeting with at least getting that information, scheduled another meeting for next week, Wednesday, just to continue discussing with Matt where, where our thoughts are, where, where we wanna see everything, you know, proceed from there.
Okay. Okay, and then that's it for board committee?
Friday and Saturday. Next week, we have our Minnesota School Board Association Legislative Directive Panel. They gave us, they mailed us a giant binder of things that we're gonna have to review. And this is recommendations that we'll give to legislature for education. And I'm excited Friday night, Professor David Schultz is actually gonna be doing a pre, a panel with us with some of the legislatures. And I think the governor might be going, so that'll be exciting for us, and it'll be exciting for me to help shape education policy as it is. So if anybody has any recommendations that they'd like to make from the board or the community or whatever that, well, the MSBA could focus on this year for legislation, feel free to email me or contact me. And the legislature starts up again on February 11th this year.
Perfect. Thank you.
And the CTE advisor, I don't know if we need reported on that one?
Typically, I don't think we have.
Okay, 'cause it's an advisory group, okay.
Then we are on the student representatives, so.
I have a couple of things. So first of all, NHS, we had a bake sale a couple days last week. And we raised $248.46. And that went right to Allison at the community center. Cause we were gonna do like Thanksgiving baskets, but then we didn't know what do you buy, what don't you buy? So we just gave it to her, and then she was gonna buy stuff that she felt was needed for Thanksgiving. And then another thing with NHS, so the senior members get to park out front here. And almost every day, we have people that aren't in NHS parked there. So we were kinda working on like how we can put signs or something. And then we just ran into that that costs a lot of money that we don't have like for that specific purpose. So we're still working that out, but.
Could you make stickers in the Innovation Center for NHS members?
We were going to, but then we still need like posts or something to put them on.
I mean, can you put them in your car, like?
Oh, we have stickers, but then people don't know that like, that's like your parking spot, you know? It's like, we all have our own parking passes. But if you get there and there's someone's car, they're like, you can't do anything about it.
Yes, you can. You can take a sticker and put it on their windshield.
So yeah, we're still working on that one. That's it.
Okay.
I don't have anything.
Okay, so then we're gonna move to all business. And I just went last myself here. So we're gonna go to all business. I have nothing.
Correct.
And then we move to truth and taxation.
Alright. Steve, you are off.
First of all, it's actually a whole way to the parking your spot.
You'll find out when you leave. There's a sticker on your windshield.
I have a sticker on my windshield when I leave. I don't know that true. Well, I'm Steve Koppa, I'm with PM Financial, and I've had the pleasure actually of giving this presentation. We have some other work for your district as well, but giving the, providing a truth and taxation presentation for your district. This is my 10th year doing it. I was kinda expecting an anniversary kick, but you must have missed that face. This is not about me. This is about your district and your truth and taxation. Thank you, board chair, board members, superintendent, and public who are, are listening. The, if we go to the second page, you'll notice that districts across the entire state by state statute are required to have a, it's called a truth and taxation hearing. And actually, the very first day you can have it was yesterday. You have to have it by the end of December, because you have to certify your levy. This year, I think it might be on December 29th or December 30th, if I remember well, finally. But the first day you can have it is yesterday, on Monday. And so you may be one of the first districts in the state that's actually holding their hearing tonight. Most, you know, hold it in December. But regardless, you're fulfilling requirements of having a meeting. And the three things that are required with the meeting, which I'll be talking about, is you need to talk about your current year's school budget, and Matt, it looks like you lost your screen.
Okay, let me fix that.
Okay, great, thanks. And we need to talk about the proposed tax levy, so two separate items there. And then the last item, which I'll give back to the board chair at the end of my presentation, is all school districts are allowed to, you know, allow, are mandated to allow the public to comment before they certify. So if we go to the next page, we'll, we'll just see that the levy calendar is an ongoing piece. It doesn't just happen here at the end of November or December. It actually starts way back in June when the, the school board certifies or adopts, adopts a budget at that point in time. And by law, all school districts have to adopt a budget by June 30th for the following school year. And that has a levy component to it. And then there's a lot of other work that takes place in August, September, you know, November, December. December, of course, being the piece that we're at right now for this, this district, actually November now, where they have to certify a final levy, a final levy. So in September, districts across the state are required to certify what's called a preliminary levy. And that's the information that then gets mailed out on all the tax notices that, that the county has mailed out. All residents would have received that by this point in time. The board can change action from what they did in September to the time in December. However, they cannot increase the amount that they certified in September, so the amount that signed your tax statements, unless they've had an election in between September and December. When we talk about the budget, which will be our next piece, districts are required to report things. And actually, it's a perfect timing because you'll have an auditor presenting on this as well. In a unified accounting method, so every, so you can compare data from district to district. And you're, you're, they're also required to use governmental fund accounting systems. And for this district, they use six different funds to account for their, all their revenues and expenditures. The general fund, which is by far the biggest, which I'll, will show you in upcoming slides. And that's really what most people think about for running a school, it's your teachers and your utilities and your transportation, your pares, your principals, your superintendent, you know, most of the, the day-to-day operations of the school. Then the other ones by name are pretty self-explanatory. Food service fund is, you know, for all your breakfast and revenue expenditures and revenues. Community service fund actually has, has expanded over the years. Your building construction fund, which we'll get to it in another slide, that is specifically for when a district sells bonds. And then they use those proceeds to do building construction, which is very relevant to your school district this year. Debt service fund is for the expenditures associated with retiring the debt on those, those building bonds that you have sold in the past. And then the internal service fund. I do have an abstract next to three of those, the general fund, the community service fund, and the debt service fund. Because those three funds have a levy component. And tonight, since we're on a truth and taxation hearing, the levy is important, a piece to understand on that. So if we go then to your board adopted budget for fiscal year 2020, which is the 2019, 2020 school year, you'll see the six different funds and the, and the dollar amounts both on the revenue side and the expenditure side that the board took action on in June of 2019. You will notice that when the board took action, there was $0 budgeted for revenue and $0 budgeted for expense in the construction fund. And that's because you didn't have your election as of June. So what would likely happen is administration will come back to the board at some future date to revise your budget for 2020, and they'll now have figures for construction revenue dollars coming in and then construction expenditures. And one piece without getting, you know, too detailed on this, your construction, well, sorry, let me backtrack. So if you look at your line item that says general fund, you notice that the revenues and expenditures are fairly well balanced, right? So the board approved a budget that has just a slightly, you know, overdone expenditures using some fund balance to balance that budget. On the construction fund, that's very, it's not very likely that will happen. Because you are going to sell, you're gonna sell your bonds, you're gonna get all that money in one fiscal year, more than likely. And so you're gonna have these millions of dollars all come in, but it might take you two or three years to spend all that money. So your expenditures are not gonna match up with your revenues and that. Don't let that alarm you, like you think you're out of balance. It's just a function of, you know, what fiscal year you're gonna spend those dollars in compared to what fiscal year, you know, you get the revenue. So in this, it's likely that this first year, you're gonna have an imbalance of revenue exceeding expenditures by quite a bit. And then the future couple of years, when you may have expenditures going out, and the only revenue you record in those years are interest that you're earning on those bond dollars. So if we go to the next slide, in graphical form, we're just, we're just showing where do your revenues go as far as by fund? And as I mentioned, the, the general fund is by far the largest fund for any district in the state. And 83% of all your revenues, whether they come from tax levy or they come from state aid, federal sources, et cetera, they're going to the general fund. And you can see your debt service fund is, is second at a distant, distant, you know, 6%. So again, very much focused on the general fund. And we'll break down the general fund a little bit on a future slide. And then if we look at source, which I think is really appropriate to look at, tonight, we are gonna talk about your tax levy. But you'll notice for your district, even with your new bond referendum being passed, your property taxes only account for 18% of the entire revenue for your school district. By far, which is true of every district in the state, the most money is coming from state aid. Now, the mixture is different from, from district to district. But it's certainly going to be the biggest piece of funding is coming from state aid. You'll notice that you get 4% from federal aid in this district, and that can vary from, from district to district. And then the other 8% really represents a whole host of things. But it could be, it could be things like your gate receipts for your football. You know, the lunch proceeds that people pay for you that are not backed by the federal or state aid, et cetera. So just a bunch of different categories come into that, fees that you collect for your CFPs. Then when we look at expenditures by fund, those which make a lot of sense are gonna closely mirror your expenditures by fund for revenues. Because you have pretty much balanced budgets in all of those funds. So that's almost a duplicate side of your expenditures are matching the revenues. Where this will get out of tilt is again, when I talk about when you sell bonds and when you're doing construction. And some of those may be a little bit out of, out of tilt here. The next slide really focuses on your general fund. And I wouldn't be surprised if you have a slide through some of this in your presentation. So this is again, by state mandates of how you need to account for your money. And this shows you in your general fund only, where are all your dollars going? So the largest dollars in that big dark blue area are going to, which categorizes elementary and secondary and regular instruction, at 46%. However, I always mention this when I come out to speak to districts as well. Because the state makes you account for other areas specifically, like for instance vocational, educational instruction. For some reason, they wanna know that differently than how you teach English or math, so they have that specifically. Well, that's the same as a classroom expenditure, that 1%. So special education instruction, it's just, you know, a, a source of some of your instruction. Instructional support services and district support services can usually be added together. So when you add all those together, you're over 60% of your money is going directly into the classrooms, which is what I think most taxpayers and, and certainly the administration wants to have happen in board members as well. Okay, so that's kind of fulfilling the requirement on talking about your, your current school year budget. And now we'll transition over to the tax levy. So one piece that's important for board members to understand, the, the previous slides I just said are really focusing on your current year's school budget, the budget that the board's approved. The tax levy that you are going to certify tonight and start collecting is really for next year's budget. So that's for school year 2021, okay? So we're kinda going on two different territories here. And remember, the tax levy is only the portion of all the money you're gonna get for 2021, right? Okay, so now we break this into the three different funds. We have the general fund first on this sliding, it's pretty busy. So I'm just gonna go to the bottom line, because anything that's significant, I have detailed on a, on an additional slide. So for the tax levy that you levied in pay, taxes payable in 2019, that was $1,466,129, so the bottom left-hand column. The proposed number for your general fund for taxes in 2020 is $1,574,630 for an increase of $108,501, 7.4%. Now, this will be important as we talk about tax increases, when we look at your total tax increases compared to what you were communicating to your public based on how much your taxes would go up if they passed the referendum. Because the referendum was for a different part of the fund. So if that didn't, if your referendum failed, you still would have this increase of $108,000 in your general fund. Okay, so I just want you to understand that part, okay? In your community service fund, it is almost exactly identical for pay 19 to pay 20. It's a slight change of $1,000 or just a, just a negative 1% change on that. And then when we go over to your debt service fund, this is the one that was affected by your voters saying yes to your question on whether or not you could issue some school building bonds. So you'll notice that if you look at it, just the top line, the voter approved debt service was $880,000, or you have $881,000 in 2019. And that's jumping up to $1,326,000 in pay 20, or an increase of $445,000. Again, that's directly related, related to the voters saying yes, you know, go ahead and fix up your buildings and sell bonds. So if we add all three of those funds together for your projected levy for this coming year, you are going from $2,398,520, man, if you go to one more slide, yeah, no problem, to the levy for this year or pack taxes payable in 2020, $2,973,273, an increase of $574,753, or 23.96%. So now, as I promised, I kind of go over some of the major changes that were in all of those busy slides. So the first piece I wanted to show you is this is a change that you had no control over, and it's really kind of a swapping spit change by the local, by the legislature. And, and that's by giving, taking away referendum authority from districts and giving it to what's called the local optional revenue, that very first line item. So that's increasing by $200,000. Your referendum revenue is decreasing by $154,000, but, but you're getting that. I mean, they're just shifting it from voter approved to every district gets this amount of money. So the net between those two is really the difference that you're getting in, in revenue for that two years. Your capital projects referendum is going up by $15,000, your equity by $12,000, your building lease by $18,000. I already mentioned your voter approved bonds. And then you have adjustments, because everything is always predicated on estimates of how many kids you're gonna get, what you think, what county thinks the referendum market value is or net cash capacity is. And all those get adjusted over a three-year period of time. So every year, you're gonna have some adjustments as well. So if I look at the next slide, I actually talked about some of the new changes already. So the reason for the, the tax portion for the LOR voter approved referendum and the equity, so the very first three line items, if you add those together, is really the local aid versus the state aid percentage. And I'll explain that to you in a minute. So what happens is the total revenue that you're going to get is usually a, a formula based on how many kids you have in your school district times an amount that the state's giving you, you know, for that certain category. And then on some line items, what the state says is based on how rich, and I put rich in quotes, I mean, how much referendum market value or net, net cash capacity you have in your district. It's going to determine how much do you pay, how much do the local taxpayers pay in this district compared to, you know, a neighboring district or a district in northern Minnesota or in southern Minnesota. So it's a function of that. So I'm going to illustrate that for you. Actually, I wish I put it on the next slide, but it's a couple of slides later, so stick with me on that thought for a second. We'll go in order here. I probably should be ordering slides. Can you go to the next slide, Matt? So the, the, the major change in the debt service part, we already talked about this, was the fact that your voters approved the question of issuing $16,090,000 of school bill bonds. Okay, so now we'll get to this slide, which I probably shouldn't have next. So if I compare this and I say, okay, in pay 19, the total revenue for your LOR and voter approved was $772,000. The total revenue that you're gonna get in pay 20 is $774,241. And then you can read the equity numbers are, you know, a difference of roughly $600. So if I add the two of those together, the total revenue that the district's going to receive next year versus this year is only an increase of $3,000. But if you look at the next columns, there are the next lines, and it shows how much are the local taxpayers gonna pay on that? That increases by a total of $58,000. So you're getting $3,000 more as a district to spend. So the board, you know, as, as far as revenue coming in, you can allocate those for expenditures. But the local effort has increased by $58,000. And that's nothing that you did wrong. It's nothing that you have any control over. It's a function of the tax values in your properties in the Painesville School District went up. And when they go up, the state says, okay, you have to pay more of this amount of money then. So the ratios for you are on those, those bottom lines. So last year for the LOR and voter approved, you were paying 73%. This year or the coming year, you're gonna be taxed to pay 79% of that total amount. And the same on equity, went from 88% to 95%. So if that continues to happen, it's actually a function, again, don't get it too complicated. It's a function of your pro, property tax values to the number of students you have. So if you're, so the worst case is your, your property tax values go up and your students go down, then you're gonna be considered a very rich district. Or the inverse is if your property taxes go down and your student counts go up, then the state will pay a greater share and you'll pay a lesser share. So I just wanna make sure that you understand that you don't have control over a lot of, you know, how much you're actually levying. It's just a function of what's happening in your district. So if we look then, your total levy's increasing by that 23%. The referendum market value, so all the value of all the properties in your district is going up by 3.88%. And your adjusted net cash capacity is going up by 3.21%. So again, the values in your districts are going up just under 4% on average. Doesn't mean that one home might go up by 10% and one home might even decrease. But on average, the values are going up by that amount. So if we go to the next slide, which most people, this is what they kinda care about. And I should qualify that this is only the school district portion of your taxes, so not county taxes, not your city taxes that you're receiving. If we look at a home value that's worth $100,000, the projected increase would be $48.27 as long as that home value remained constant at $100,000. So if you had a home last year that you were paying taxes on valued $100,000, it stayed constant at $100,000. This year, this coming year, your taxes should go up by that $48 number or just over 17%. And then you can read all the other numbers going forward as well. Now, on that same slide, the information that went out, I know prior to your vote, was a $100,000 home would have an increase of approximately $40. But remember that one of the very first slides I showed you in that general fund levy portion, where you were going up $100,000 a tax levy, that's not part of that calculation of the, you know, the $40 increase. The $40 increase was only the effect on the debt that you were gonna have to pay on issuing those bonds. So again, if, if you had no other tax increases and you only had this successful vote, our map actually shows your taxes would've gone up like $38. So they've been really close. They've been really close to that $40 number. But because, you know, your general fund levy's going up by $100,000, 50 some of that thousand was just because of the, the change in state aid versus global levy. That's why you're gonna see a, you know, an increase of $48 as opposed to $40. Just wanna make sure board members understand that, you know, public understands that, or, you know, we have questions that you can be able to feel comfortable answering that. Okay, so other factors that may affect your individual property tax state. Okay, so other factors that may affect your individual property tax statement that you received in the mail, I know I got mine last week, so I'm not sure where the people got theirs, but they have to be out by November, by state law, is again, an increase or decrease in your assessed valuation of property. So again, when I, when I show the example of a $100,000 home, you may have a $100,000 home, and it went to $103,000, because remember, property's increased by an average by between 3% and 4% in this district. So it would be very normal to have an increase on your, your valuation. That will increase the amount of taxes you pay too. And then again, I just want to mention too that we are here to talk about school district taxes. So if your taxes are going up in total, which most people care about, including myself, you don't always look and see, well, what part of that is due to the county, what part is due to the city, what part is due to the school district. All of that is listed out on your tax statement, but we're here only to talk about the increase of the school district portion. One reference piece, and I know in the past, the district has included this presentation on their website, so if they do that, again, people can access this page here, and this is a website address where you can go to get property tax relief if you're eligible, you know, through the state of Minnesota. And so you get just a communication piece to make homeowners aware of that, that there's some ability to get some relief. And then that, I know that's on the board action next, is that in September, you can, you can levy a, let's use a maximum mechanism, which means you're not certifying a certain dollar amount. And when you take, when you take your final levy action, you have to certify a dollar amount to the penny. So Mr. Board Chair, the recommend, recommended by the administration is that you certify the amount that's listed there, $2,973,272.69 when it comes time to take the action in the meeting. And with that, I'll turn it over to Board Chair for public comment.
So do we have any public comment on anything that went on here? Okay, if none, we will move to item B, certify the pay 2020 levy. And we just had a really nice presentation. So we'd be looking for a motion to approve the pay 2020 levy of $2,973,272.69. I'll make that motion.
Second.
And we have a second from Jacob. So any further discussion? No further discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post say no, carried.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, now we're on the audit. We have the big guns here today.
I guess we got double dosed.
So we have the audit, our report.
Hello, everyone, my name's Ryan Schmidt, auditor of Schlatter-Winner and Company. I did hand out the hard copy of the presentation. I don't know if you've got your email, Matt, but I did email it to you while we was talking just now.
Okay.
If you have it, I can do that. All right. But I'm going to walk us through a high-level summary of your FY19 audit. So you should have the actual full audit reports sent to you already. We've distributed those, we're just going to walk through the presentation, say, kind of summarize those. So looking into those first page, let's, let's talk about the audit process kind of at a high level. So what do we do when we come over an audit? Well, an audit consists of coming in, getting your financial records, your financial data, and performing a number of procedures over this data with the purpose of being able to express an opinion. These procedures consist of things like inquiries, various analytics, where we develop expectations for what the numbers will be, and then we see how the actual results compare, and then lots and lots of detailed testing. So looking at vendor invoices, looking at bank statements, third-party confirmations, things like that. And based on the results of these procedures, we've expressed what's called an unmodified opinion, which is a clean opinion, it's the best opinion you can go to achieve. So in other words, we feel that your financial statements are accurate. The next couple of pages here talk about some other results of the audit. This is where we would let you know if we had any difficulties or saw anything unusual or anything like that. So if we saw any strange transactions, or weird accounting policies, or anything out of the norm, this is where we would let you know about it. Nothing like that to report, everything's pretty standard practice. Couple items I do like to point out on this page relate to some significant estimates in the financials. So there's a few estimates. One of these relates to how much is MBE actually going to pay? Now, this seems to be a moving target that kind of fluctuates for a few months, actually, it's almost a whole year after year end. By this point, it's pretty well locked down, but it does fluctuate a little bit, so that's always up here. The net pension liability, I mean, net whole tab liability are two other estimates. These are calculated based on actuarial studies, so they can fluctuate a little bit as these estimates change. We'll look, we'll look at these a little later in the presentation. And next page, just real quick, no difficulties during the audit whatsoever, everything went very smoothly, we got the information we needed, procedures went along. Okay, so before we get into the numbers, I'm going to talk about some of the other things that we have to look at during the audit. So one of these things relates to internal controls and the processes and procedures that you have in place that gets you to those numbers. So there's a few items that we have reported in the financials this year, and they're actually all pretty standard, pretty common. So I've got all three of them summarized here. The first of them relates to audit adjustments. So what this means is that when we're performing the audit, sometimes we have to make adjustments to get your numbers to their proper year-end balances under the modified accrual basis of accounting that you need to follow. So because we assisted with performing some of these year-end adjustments, we have to let the reader know about it. The next item here is extremely common, this one is a lack of segregation of duties. And this is simply because your district is only so large, and you only have so many people in your district office performing accounting-related functions, you're not able to fully segregate all of those functions to the extent that's considered ideal. It's very common, but it's good to be aware of that as the board. And final, the last one we've got here is the financial statement preparation. What this means is that we, as a third party, did prepare your financial statements for you. And the idea here is that because we're an external party, we wouldn't know your district as well as an internal CPA or somebody internally preparing your financial statements. So there's a slight likelihood that maybe a disclosure was missed or something along those lines. Next page, Minnesota legal compliance. So as a school in the state of Minnesota, the office, the state auditor gives us all sorts of fund checklists that we get to go through and make sure that you're in compliance with various Minnesota statutes. No compliance findings this year, except for one really sort of housekeeping item. On an annual basis, you're required to approve who has the authority to initiate electronic fund transfers. It looked like last year that approval wasn't explicitly done, or wasn't explicitly documented in the minutes, and as a result, we did have to make a note of that report, but pretty Another item that the state has us look at during the audit is your student activity accounts. So these activity accounts, we actually have to do kind of a mini audit within your overall audit. So we look at the financials for these activity accounts, we express an opinion, and then we look at various compliance requirements that the state puts out. So the opinion that we've had, that we have expressed here is what's called a qualified opinion. And this is very standard, if you look at any district throughout the state of Minnesota that has separate student activity accounts, you'll see a qualified opinion. And the reason for that is because it's very difficult to extend our audit procedures to cover all of the revenue sources coming into student activities. The documentation, the trail there is a little bit difficult to track down, and because of that, we don't actually extend our audit procedures fully to the revenues. So our audit focuses more on disbursements, how is the money being used, is the money coming out of student activities going to appropriate places? And we didn't have any issues with what we saw in that regard. However, we do have a couple of compliance-related findings here, and I think they're similar to ones you've had in the past. We had a few accounts that didn't have any activity within the last two years. Technically, if a student activity account doesn't have activity for two years, the state wants you to close it out. The other one we have here is two of the accounts had deficit fund balances. So that simply means that for the time being, you spent more than what you had available in that activity account. Any questions before we get into some of the numbers here? Okay? Well, before we get into the numbers, I would like to take a look at your pupil units and what's been happening over the past few years, because that's what really drives your numbers. So looking at 2018, and actually, the whole past five years, your enrollment has remained really consistent, really steady. Your total enrollment for 2018 was 932 students, total enrollment for FY19, 932 students. So very flat. Next page, we've got your general fund here, similar approach, we're looking at the past five years of your general fund, very high level, and we're also looking at your 2019 budget here as well. So looking at actual, compared to budget here for 2019, you budgeted for revenues of about $11.1 million in your general fund. Actual revenues were really close, came in about $146,000 higher than budget. Expenditures, you budgeted for about $11.2 million. Actual expenditures came in below that, about $224,000 below that. So you budgeted for an overall decrease in your fund balance of about $58,000, but because of these differences, you actually had an increase in your fund balance of about $312,000. You can see that green bar there on the chart, your fund balance has gone up from 2019. Next page looks at this fund balance in kind of a different way. I like to turn it into a ratio like this and look at your fund balance as a percentage of your annual expenditures. And the district actually has a policy in place to maintain a minimum of at least 8% of the annual budget. Now, this is actually a pretty low minimum, I see other districts who have a policy of around 20%, some even up to 30, 35%. But you're pretty well in excess of your 8% minimum here. At the end of the year, your fund balance as a percent of your annual expenditures is up to about 20%, so you continue that increase there over the past few years. Okay, so of your $3.6 million fund balance, how much is available for spending, how much is restricted, what's the breakout? So this pie chart here kind of explains that, the green that you see here, that's unassigned. So that means of your fund balance that you have at the end of the year, this is the portion that's available for spending and everyday use at your discretion. The next few largest items here, that's, oh, I don't know, peach color there, is committed for post-employment benefits. So that's for your severance, future health insurance, birth hieraries, et cetera. And then the next two largest categories that you see there are your operating capital and then your long-term facilities, so those dollars are restricted for those purposes. And if you don't care for fund balance, and you just want to know what's happening with your cash, well, here's a slide that just shows what's happening with your cash and the general fund. Pretty reflective of your fund balance section. Okay, so that does it to your general fund, and I like that you guys just had a summary of kind of your different funds with your truth and taxation presentation, it was a good precursor for this. We've got your other funds up on the slides here. So your other funds being food service, community service, debt service, and then building construction. Food service and community service, very standard, very similar to what you had in the past, both of those, you had an increase of around $45,000, $46,000 for the year. Debt service, also pretty standard, revenues exceeded expenditures by about $26,000, which is typically the case, you have money coming in, and it goes into property taxes, and then it just goes up because debt service payments usually stays pretty flat. And building construction, like you just heard, not much for revenues coming into this fund, just some interest earnings, but you have been working down at fund balance. So here you have expenditures exceeding your revenues by about $252,000. Sounds like that's going to change quite a bit going forward. And then cash in each of these funds over the past five years as well. Pretty flat for your food service, community service, and debt service, but like I just mentioned, with your building construction, that light blue, we've been spending that end of the past five years. So that does it for the fund financial statements. If you were to go through the big packet that was emailed out to you, the large audit financials, you'll know there's a separate set of financials in there too, where we take all those funds, we wrap them all together, and we add in things like your capital assets, your buildings, your equipment, et cetera, and then we add in things like your long-term debt, your long-term liabilities for severance, post-employment benefits, pensions, et cetera. The next two slides talk about government-wide assets, so those total assets, everything wrapped together, and then the next slide talks about liabilities. So once again, a five-year trend analysis, 2019 increased assets compared to 2018, very slight increase in your current assets, which is the blue, that's your cash, your short-term receivables, et cetera. And you also had an increase in your infrastructure, capital assets, et cetera. Liabilities on the other hand, a little bit of a different story for a mid, let's ignore that green bar that's jumping all over the place, and look at the blue and the reds. The blue being your current liabilities, not a whole lot of change there, that's just your vendor payables. And then your, your red bar there is your debt, and you can see from 2018 to 2019, you did have a slight decrease in your debt as you've been paying that off. Now, in the beginning, I talked about your net pension liability and how that's a significant estimate because it can fluctuate so much based on those actuarial assumptions that go into calculating it. That's this green bar. That green bar is your proportionate share of the statewide pension liabilities. So every year, these statewide pension plans, PERA and TRA, they have studies to determine how far in deficit they are, so basically how much underbundled they are. And that overall deficit, which is in the billions, they take that and they break a small piece out, and they give it to each school district and each city, and they make you put it on your financial statements. It's not something you could pay off, even if you wanted to write them a check, it's more just an on-pay-for liability, so that people know what your theoretical share of that liability is.
But it went down.
It went down, yeah.
So that's the first time we've seen that in a while.
Yeah, so there's a couple of reasons it went down. The biggest reason it went down is that the actuary changed one of their largest assumptions, called the discount rate, and they put it more in line with what PERA is using. So as a result, I believe they projected greater investment earnings and better performance in that regard, and because of that, they're saying, okay, the future long-term liability is going to be less than what we expected it to be. The other reason it went down is because the state started kicking in greater share of contributions as well. So it's not just the local school districts and local government entities that are paying into this, the state helps with its contributions to help get this funded. So those are the two biggest reasons it dropped down. Next slide, just take a look at that long-term debt, so this was the red bar on the previous page, debt has been continuously dropping off over the past five years into the maintenance of the state. And one final slide, I'll throw on here just as more of an informational slide. MBE actually has some website, or has a tool on their website that allows you to compare yourself to other districts or to statewide averages. So right here, the most current data that we have available for statewide averages is 2018. So I have your district, 2018, and the far left, the middle, is the statewide averages, and then on the right, it's your 2019 numbers. This is just your general fund revenues per pupil unit. So revenues and expenditures per pupil unit, and then the green is your fund balance per pupil unit. So comparing yourself to statewide averages, your revenues and expenses per student are less than average, yet your fund balance, you've been able to create a larger reserve than the statewide averages. And a lot of this can actually fluctuate quite a bit based on the number of special needs students that you have, because there's so much more expenditures, there's so much more funding that's going to those students.
I do have to say, it looks a lot nicer than it was six years ago when I got on this board, or seven years ago. We couldn't cut fast enough to get ourselves out of trouble, and we always hoped it was going to get us back on track, and it looks like it has.
Yeah, I agree.
So, okay, so let's entertain a motion to, thank you. We'll entertain a motion to approve the, what's FY?
Fiscal year 19.
Fiscal year 19 audit report as prepared by Schling?
Schlatter-Winner.
Schlatter-Winner and Company. Schletterwetter and company. So, do we have a motion?
Motion.
We have a motion from Thomas. Do we have a second? Okay, we have a second from Cheryl. Any further discussion? No further discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post say no? Carried. Thank you, thank you for your presentation. Thanks for getting the audit report already. Okay, then we go to the next in line, which is the two thousand eighteen nineteen budget after audit.
So, there's an attachment, um, again, this, this spreadsheet should look familiar to, uh, board members. This is our, kind of our master budget spreadsheet. Um, this essentially, today now, we're able to close out the eighteen nineteen budget. So, by approving the audit, now what we will do is we have taken the eighteen nineteen budget and we have fixed the last column in blue on the far right, the ending fund balance. Those numbers now reflect exactly what Ryan was presenting that the auditors have, have found. So, we will take that and close out eighteen nineteen. I would ask you to approve that as the final eighteen nineteen budget. The next step with this then is we will then take those ending balances for eighteen nineteen, and we're going to pull up our nineteen twenty budget sheet, and we will plug those ending balances in to our blue column on the left. That's now our beginning point for nineteen twenty. Um, so you will see this sheet again probably come January or February once we have the nineteen twenty enrollment, um, data that we can make a better assumption as far as where we're going to most likely end the nineteen twenty school year with pupil units and how many students we've served. Then the board will have a revised nineteen twenty budget that'll come back with an actual, um, assumption of our, our first four and a half months or so of school and, and what kind of pupil counts that we have. So, my recommendation after approving the audit is to go and finalize the eighteen nineteen fund bal... or, uh, balance summary after audit. Questions, of course, on it, I'd be more than happy to attempt to answer them.
We have community ed listed twice, but there are different, different fund listings or different numbers behind them.
Yeah, so, um, as far as the restricted four sixty-four, restricted three twenty-one, three sixty-two, and seven ninety-eight. Yeah, so those numbers are actually the UFRS code numbers that are associated with that. I would have to go and just do a little digging as far as what four sixty-four is exactly. Um, my assumption is, um, adult basic ed is GED, adult basic ed, ECFE in school readiness, those, um, the school readiness pathway dollars, a lot of those I used with pause. My assumption with those other two is most of those, the three twenty-one, three sixty-two, and seven ninety-eight, where the bulk of those dollars are, that is the fee-for-service programming that community ed is doing. That is where the bulk of the, the dollars are, are running through. Um, and then I can do a little homework on the four sixty-four, I'll give you exactly this.
So, it's basically just for coding reasons that there's a...
It's a component of community ed that, that the state wants us to have listed out as a, a separate item rather than lumping it together.
Okay, I was just curious.
Any other questions?
Other questions?
Then we would look for a motion to approve the two thousand eighteen nineteen updated budget after audit.
So moved.
I have a motion from Rick.
A second.
A second from Maggie. Uh, any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post say no? Carried. Then we're down to union contracts, and, um, all the contracts are there. We all have them to look at.
I can just give you a quick summary of these. Um, these are all the non-union contracts, so none of these positions are, um, in any, uh, labor group. Um, the philosophy with these groups have been very similar to all of our other contracts. Uh, the goal is to get health insurance contribution at the, for the twenty twenty-one school year to a seven thousand dollar contribution. Um, that is the goal. Again, we will be bringing in the, um, VIBA offering for employees starting next school year, so that will be extended, um, to these employees as well. These are all, uh, two-year agreements. Um, the administrative negotiating committee had met with all of these. I would recommend that they be approved, and I don't know if there's other specific questions related to any of them.
I'll make a motion to approve the non-union contracts as presented.
A second.
I have a second from Thomas. Any further discussion?
I just want to say, I was on that committee, and these people are very easy to work with and, um, very cognizant of what issues the district is going through and, and how they could work with us well to benefit the students. I was very happy with negotiations.
Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post say no? Carried. Then we're on the baseball stadium lease, and Matt, I'm going to just turn right back to you again.
Yep, uh, so the baseball stadium lease has been shared with the baseball association. Um, the feedback I got from them was positive. They are on board with this. Um, I did, uh, make some modifications to, uh, simplify. The changes again are still highlighted, but now the old language is removed, and this would be the new language that's in there. Um, I did make the change on rather than a three-year, it's a five-year. The dates are right, but the, the three-year was left in there. Um, otherwise, this is the, essentially the exact same lease agreement that was proposed at, um, our last board meeting that the board booked at. Questions regarding the, the lease?
Okay, and we would look for a motion to approve the baseball stadium lease as presented.
So moved.
Or a motion from Rick?
A second.
A second from Thomas. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post say no? Carried. Now, we're on, uh, design team update information.
So, the design team met yesterday. That's, uh, why I don't have any resources or attachments here. Um, as soon as I do get them, I will forward them out to the full board, and you can review them. But I thought maybe the design team members that were at the meeting would want to just give a quick summary or update the board where things are at.
I personally walked away from the meeting totally excited that we were moving on really well. Um, um, I don't want to speak for the group. I, either Maggie or Thomas, you can speak for the group.
I unfortunately wasn't here yesterday to be excited for it, so.
Oh, that's... So, Maggie, do you want to just... Maggie is our thankful, thankfully our note taker so that we can communicate with the rest of the board as much as we can. Go ahead, Maggie.
Yeah, it was a, it was a good meeting, it was a long meeting, but we're at the stage where we have to make some decisions about, you know, paint priorities, colors, and we're getting down to the details, and that is exciting because you can visually see what it's going to look like. Uh, we went over some of the changes, um, that have taken place, and should go into some of those details. Our, uh, so one of the areas in the CTE space, originally we had talked about opening up the entire space, but due to some load-bearing walls and the cost of removing them, uh, one of the solutions was, let's put in some two, or some, put in two potentially garage doors that are glass so that, that space would actually be more flexible, so be closed off when needed, opened up when needed. But, uh, instead of removing the load-bearing wall, so that was a change, um, will save, uh, some money. Um, we went from, in the metal shop, we were originally potentially talking about ten portable welders, and we will start with five. The cool thing about those welders is they truly are portable, so they can be moved from space to space. They can be in the metals area, they can be in the auto area, um, and it's really a flexible space.
Can I just add one comment to that?
Mm-hmm.
We, we will start with more than five.
Okay.
What is going to be funded out of the project will be five. Uh, my intention is to have another five, um, from, from district funds that we will have in that space as well, for a total of ten. Um, it's just that there will be five provided out of the, the project, so.
Thank you. Uh, let's see. Flooring, we talked a lot about the flooring, so the original flooring that was in the bid, um, UNESCO came back and said, and said, do we really need that high-quality grade of floor? It's not that this flooring is going down, um, that will impact the safety or health of our students in any way, shape, or form. It's that the floor that was originally in it was just, it's, you could like drive a semi over it. We don't need that. Um, so what we're going with is a seven-millimeter floor style that most of field... Uh, they just kind of said, most field houses have that floor in, and it's saving, I think it's going about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars by moving to that floor. Um, they reassured us it is very much a high-quality floor. One thing we talked about is there's kind of this misconception that, um, wood floors are more expensive or not as good, going back and forth, and really with the wood floor, they actually can be higher, um, or not as appealing because of the maintenance is one of the things. And so, we discussed it and really feel that the flooring type that we're going with, it's a poured rubber versus, um, a rolled rubber, so like they have their mat, and then it's poured over, and the color's in it. Is that a correct representation of the floor? Um, we can always go back and, and change the flooring at, um, a later time in this design process if we want to fluctuate with that, but it's not something they said, you know, we could adjust, but we really felt confident. Max was at the table too and saying, that's one area we should not skimp on is a floor. I mean, that, we're talking about ACL injuries, knee injuries, all sorts of things. We want to make sure that the floor is, um, suitable. Paint lines, so that was, it was fun to see, um, is really picking up the priorities. So, we're ending up with four basketball courts, four volleyball courts, two tennis courts, twelve pickleball courts. Um, and we really looked at how those paint lines would overlay and what we would want to, um, be the most like visual. So, obviously, the basketball's primary, volleyball's primary. Um, and then looking at the pickleball and tennis, they would obviously have their paint lines, but it wouldn't be the thing that you would see right away. So, and we determined all the colors, um, the mesh curtain dividers. See, we're getting really into the details, but I think it's pretty exciting. So, the dividers, we originally had, or looked at, would we have the dividers like up to eight feet where there would be, um, where it wouldn't be transparent so that you could potentially have classes, there won't be interruption visually. But the more we talked about it with the staffing structure we have, we want that space to be open. So, you'd still have the same safety structure, but we would only go up maybe three feet with like a solid line because we want obviously staff to be able to see the entire space. Um, let's see, the other kind of big thing we talked about was the exterior, or the exterior component. So, originally, we really wanted the visual of a flat roof. And the more we talked about it, um, there are a lot of challenges that come with that. So, structurally, it does not change at all. Having a flat roof is basically, it's a visual, like the steel goes up higher to cover up any sort of pitch or slope. And what happens though is with having the flat roof and that feature, you have to have like, um, a certain type of gutter that would potentially, they didn't say it would, but potentially the implications of weather and all sorts of things and leaks happening are going to be a lot higher. So, your long-term maintenance costs, um, and the cost of the additional steel and everything is a lot more expensive. So, by moving to a sloped roof, and it's not, I don't remember what he said the grade of the pitch was, but it's not very...
It's like a two-twelve. It's a...
So, you're not going to see it.
A standard steel building grade, which is, I don't know, about a two-twelve. I think it's somewhere in that neighborhood.
So, that will save, um, about forty to fifty thousand dollars, and it adds longevity to the building. So, we decided, yes, that makes sense, um, let's go with that option. Um, we looked at the exterior components of what it would look like, so there was a couple of options presented because it is, it's a large span of steel, and we need to have two, um, safety doors on the front. So, you have these two safety doors that, and this big steel panel. So, they presented different options of where brick would flank the sides and how we could have the logo with brick behind it, um, and different options. And one thing we're going to look at is going to a local business and having some conversations, could we have some local partners help, um, create our logo out of metal instead of going to different vendors? So, we went through some of those options. Um, we went into details on the interior design, uh, down to the tiles. Are we going to have larger tiles, smaller, um, mosaic tiles in the restrooms? It, a lot of these conversations, like UNESCO was really great, like, why would we go with, uh, should we go with a larger one? Is that going to be easier to maintain? And we went to those details of what is the best. Um, and having Donnie at the table is helpful, because we could say, is this going to be harder to maintain, easier to maintain? What is your preference? So, we went and picked out the tile for the restroom facilities. Um, the reception area will look very similar to the welcome space. Um, but UNESCO, we talked through, we really want that welcome space, which will be where Matt's team sits, is we really want that to be very, very welcoming, uh, friendly as someone comes in because that's their first point of entrance into that space. Um, and it's the space itself, I'm, I think they'll share the slides with us, so you can see the different options. It's industrial, but it's not cold at all. It's a very creative, um, vibe, and I don't know, I think that's about everything that's... The next meeting that it should cover is the millwork, that will be a smaller group that will pick out, um, for the reception area concession and CTE space, so there's, that's the only scope of the millwork project. A different team's going to be and decide that. And then the next design meeting is December eleventh. And we'll continue to kind of pick in those final, final details down to colors. Any questions?
Couple of questions.
Yes.
Um, scoreboards in the fieldhouse, are they going to be wall-mounted or are they just portable, uh, scoreboards that are on tables? Or has that been talked about?
We didn't talk about it.
They will be, they will be fixed in the facility. So, there will be four scoreboards.
So, they'll have one for each court?
They will have one for each court.
Okay.
Um, but they will be suspended from...
Mounted?
Yes.
Okay.
From the, the trust system and stuff.
That's a nice touch, a lot of places don't have that, and that's, uh... And, and with the change of the floor, we can't have monster truck rallies in there?
No, no.
Oh, shoot, I thought that...
I mean, we could, but...
Well, not with that, no. Uh, the other question I had was on, what, what's the timeline for bidding, getting bids?
So, the bid is still, I don't know, I think it's February is when...
Open. So, the plan here is, um, the December eleventh is hopefully the final design meeting. And then from there, that will give UNESCO December eleventh to the first of the year to turn around construction documents. And then those construction documents will hit the, the, um, the market for bids in January with the plan that this, uh, body would be opening those bids towards the middle or end of February, is what the...
I get, my only concern I had was that with so many districts passing bond issues, that we stay ahead of that because there's going to be a lot of people looking for, uh, companies to make bids.
Why is there a different team doing millwork, did you say?
Because it's... It's not a different team, it's just a smaller group.
Our whole committee isn't meeting.
Oh, they've already had their eyes on all of it.
Yep, so it's like picking over...
We saw all the samples.
Yeah.
They just have to pick out...
They saw the rest of it, though.
Kind of the colors and some of that.
You don't have to catch somebody all up to one.
No.
I wanted to be the first one to bow to that meeting. Somebody else that's in that area could figure out.
The reality is, I think a lot of that millwork is going to be consistent throughout, uh, the space. It's not like you're going to pick millwork out for this area, and it's going to have this and then millwork in this. It's going to be the same theme throughout, um, so.
Yep, so like the, the, um, interior blockwork will look similar to where the auditorium is. It's a burnished, I forget the technical name, but we want to carry some of those things out. The flooring, we want to be consistent for those purposes. Some of the millwork, like they said, they want the people who are actually in those offices to sit down and say, where do you put your personal items? Where do you naturally, so that they are building for their workspace? So, like, I want to be a good representation for that. So, in those cases, they're bringing in people who are actually in those spaces to talk about what, what their needs are.
Right.
Any other questions?
And we're, oh, we're still looking at windows at, on the north side of the building. They'd be up high. We're removing all, they did give us, um, some options for glass doors in the community center, and we said, no. Um, let's not do that with fouls and activity and having glass doors. So, we dropped it out for that, but there will be some, um, like coming in.
Like the glass doors, we got away from, our original proposal had glass doors on this building, but then up came the question too, how people can know where to go to get in. Glass door looks kind of inviting. So, not only for utility reasons, it becomes a solid door, and I think we decided that there won't even be hardware on the outside of those doors. Those are escape doors if we need them for emergency, not for, for entry. And that way, there won't be any confusion that you need to come around to the entryway to, to come in. It was a very, very productive meeting. And UNESCO was interesting because there were questions that we had that they had gone through the, the thought and analysis themselves as there's four or five of them were kind of trying to pretend to be us, I guess, and, and what we should do. It was, it was impressive, I thought.
Yeah, the fun part.
We were at, um, Maple Lake yesterday for basketball, and they have a field house. But I thought they had three courts, but they only have two. And I looked at that, I thought, ours is going to be twice as big, this is going to be huge. This is really going to be neat. I can't wait.
Mm-hmm. And we, we were talking, um, through how do we make sure for the community that they would have a set aside court as that was promised, and so, I mean, there'll be some... And so, I mean, there'll be some calendaring, things we'll need to navigate through, but partly is having those courts so that you can have your students in a FIAID class, but also have a court dedicated so community members can come in during the day, which will be awesome.
Okay, anything else on that topic? And we'll move on to the solar garden subscription. I'm going to pass this one on to you.
Yeah, so this is just information. Again, I'm not asking the board to make a decision on this. I did meet with a representative from this Novell Energy Solution. We do have some available kilowatt hours that are not accounted for in our current solar subscription. So it, it's a small amount, you know, just below 5,500 kilowatt hours annually. Again, it does equate to roughly about a $5,000 to $6,000 savings. So it's just something for the board to think about. We certainly can be fully enrolled in any of those subscriptions to solar gardens right now. They are, there are no costs to the subscribers. The ownership of that garden is who is responsible for capital costs, and obviously, Exel Energy is looking for subscribers with their, to meet their renewable energy goals and all of that. So just know that this is an option as we move forward. I'm still doing some more light work on it, but don't be surprised if, if moving forward, we do move forward with trying to get all of our kilowatt hours subscribed so that we can just maximize what our total savings is.
Is this subscription an annual or is it like a five-year?
No, I believe it's a 20-year agreement. I think they say that equipment, those solar gardens right now have a life expectancy of 25 years. I think there's a lot of debate on even after their life expectancy. It sounds like they also continue to keep reducing it, so I, I don't understand all the technicalities of it, but this would be a, it'd be a 20-year subscription is what I would have gone to. So at the end of the day, potentially, we can shave another $5,000 to $6,000 off of our utility bill, is I guess what I'm saying. I'll continue working on it, and if it's something that I have a final product, you'll see it again. Questions at all or other questions?
This is something, I think they started that solar firm, I gather, information from myself, where they increase your, your kilowatt hour cost, but then they, they create the savings by the reduction in...
So this is different than the residential programs. So right now, we are, we are subscribing to a garden over by St. Hill. Now, that doesn't mean that the garden we're subscribing to, that we're getting electricity from it. That electricity goes to the Exel grid, and then Exel is using it as an accounting tool, I mean, ultimately, so that they can show their renewable energy usage. So this is different than the residential program. Essentially, what you end up doing is rather than paying your utility bill to Exel, you would pay this portion of your utility bill to Novell Energy Solution. They get a credit from Exel, they bill us our bill, and in turn, they also turn around and give us a, a credit on our bill as well. So essentially, what it comes down to is there's a nine cent or 10 cent per kilowatt hour credit that Novell Energy gets. They pass, they keep nine of the cent credit, and they pass one of the cents on to their subscribers. So that's how it ultimately works. It's identical to the current garden that we are subscribing to that is in St. Hill to another renewable energy firm, so. Okay? That's where we're at with it.
Then we'll go to the next one, review the upcoming meetings. We all have it here. We got December 3rd is a policy committee meeting, December 4th, a facility committee, and December 10th, a regular school board meeting, plus the meeting that...
I did add, I did add the December 11th meeting to this document, if you're looking at the original document.
Probably not.
So the December 11, 2019, design team meeting will be 8:00 AM in this, in this room. That is the, the meeting that Maggie was talking about.
You sent the invite out yet?
I have not sent the invite out, but I will take care of that.
UNESCO's on one of them.
I think that was based on the last sign-in though, so if you didn't see it, I'll take care of it because I might get on the school board calendar, and then I'll send it out to those committee members and stuff, and I'll make sure we have those for all those meetings.
Okay. Anybody have anything else?
Move the board to now adjourn.
Okay, we have a motion to adjourn. We have a second from Thomas. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All post say no? We're adjourned.